All right, good evening. Today is Tuesday, May 18, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to convene a meeting? Lori, second. Teresa, no, second, Laura. All in favor? All right. And let's do the pledge allegiance. All right. So Cynthia couldn't join us tonight for the regular meeting, but she'll be joining us later on for the vote results. And our first agenda item is comments by the board. So I'll go around. Teresa, do you have any comments?
I have no comments, other than there's still time to vote. So I hope everybody goes out and exercises their right to do so. That's it for me.
All right, great. Laura?
You know, I just want to also remind people to go vote, please. I just want to thank the PTA, actually. Teresa and I had the pleasure of being in a health and medical panel, so career panel, and it's on, I think it's going to be on the website now.
I already watched it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. I was going to say something to that, because they were so awesome.
Yeah. So I thought it was great. I think, you know, it's a great idea, and I think if we continue it, maybe we can do it in like an assembly fashion, too, and zoom in or do a hybrid, because it was really great. I had a lot of dialogue with my two that watched it at home. So I encourage people to watch it, and thank you again to the PTA for organizing that and our administration for participating. It was great, right?
I feel like when they're in person, too, there will be more dialogue.
Yeah, yeah, that's the thing.
Like, I was doing like webinars for work tonight, and you just don't get the same interaction.
It's true.
When you're kind of in a room. So I think it's great. Thank you very much.
It's nice that people can zoom in from work, which was great. You know, everybody had came in, but if you did a little hybrid and then you had Q and A after, it would be great. I think kids might have had a lot of questions about it. So it was great. And then today, we had the Taste of Toccojo, too.
Yeah.
I was just there for a little bit. So it's nice to have things back a little bit more to normal.
Yeah.
All is pass along.
Great. Lori?
I just wanted to say, please, if you haven't voted, please go out and vote. Today is the day. Please, please, please. So I've been pretty much, did you go vote to every person on the streets? It's been terrible. So hopefully, everyone will vote, and hopefully, the vote will go in our favor, so that we can continue to make the kind of moves we need to make to make our environment the best possible environment for our students. And I do want to say one thing. I was talking briefly while we were waiting to start, and I wanted to just say that I love the spirit of this administration and our board, and just the wonderful things that we're doing in the district. It's been welcoming, and I haven't, I personally have not felt that way over the years, and I've been here quite some time now. And it's a whole different vibe, and I just appreciate the spirit that we have here, both from our parents, our students, our administration, our teachers, and I'm looking forward to us continuing in that vein. Because I think that when we operate at our best and we operate with respect and kindness towards one another, it absolutely overflows to our children, and you see them doing the same thing, even when we're not in their presence. So I hope that we can continue to do that as a district. And thank you, Amy, because you definitely have brought that spirit with you. Thank you.
Great. Yeah. All I wanted to say was just thank you to the administration and our district clerk, Robin Dunn, for all the amazing work that was put into getting us to where we are today with this vote. A lot goes on behind the scenes to get to us to this point. We're obviously very excited about the election, about the budget and the bond. But regardless of how it turns out, it was done seamlessly today, in terms of logistics and in terms of how it went off. And it seems like nothing from the outside, but it's a lot of work. And Ms. Dunn was a big, big part of it, and it was, just in the whole administration. So just want to thank everybody who was involved, the polling workers as well, everyone. It's very important, and thank you all for doing that. And I also want to give a special thank you to the PTA for all the work they did on the ground to get the messaging out and encourage participation. We did what we could, but they pick up the slack, like they always do, and do all that extra stuff that we can't, and it's really, really well appreciated, much appreciated. So thank you very much. We see it, we know it. Thank you. And then I did want to mention, actually, how great I thought the career panels were that the PTAs put on. I know we've had two so far. We had music and art, I believe it was, and now the health one. And I watched most of the music one, and I watched all of the health one. It was really, really good, really informative. That's a great program, and I hope you're going to do more. I assume you're going to do more, because it's a really good, really, really good resource. So thank you very much for doing that.
Yeah, I think the overwhelming, like, theme, regardless of like what you're working in, whether it's music or health or whatever, is that you can take a different path.
Yep.
And get to the same destination. And that was like the one message that was sent through everybody's talk, which I think is really important to relay to our high school students, because it can be so overwhelming trying to pick a college. What am I going to do? Like, you're only 17.
Yep.
Or 16, and you don't have to know right now. So I felt like that was a common theme that really resonated, and it's so important that we keep instilling in them, because it can be really overwhelming, and these are incredibly stressful times.
I also think what's great about it is, you know, the folks on the panel are familiar faces to some of our kids, you know, because they were in the community, and it demystifies some of these jobs, when you see people that you know of and you're familiar with talking about those professions in a very real way. And I think it just, you know, I think when you're in high school, you have a tendency to sort of create in your mind what you think certain things are, and then when you hear people that you know speaking about it in a very real way, I think it's really good to do that.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Helpful, you know?
I didn't even have to show my ID today. They recognized my voice, which, I don't know, we can leave that there. She's like, "Keep that on the board." I'm like, "Oh, gosh."
All right, that's it for me. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Goodman. You have any comments?
Great. So I'm going to echo a lot of what you said, but good evening, everybody. Thank you for tuning in, or our community that is here tonight. As we've all said, today is our annual budget vote, so I thank everybody who has voted. And if you're watching this right now and you haven't voted, you can catch this later, and you can go out to vote right now. Special thank you to Robin Dunn. I really must say this, as a district clerk, it's a very big job, and she did it without missing a beat and always with a smile on her face. And to everybody who's working and at the election, it's, I've heard how friendly everybody is and how welcoming it is, which is what we strive for every single day in Toccojo. This year, our capital project is also on the budget, on the ballot. So if you haven't gone out yet, please know polls are still open and close at 9:00 PM tonight. Again, we appreciate everyone who has come out to vote, planning to come out to vote, and everyone who got the vote out, the word out about the vote, and special thank you again to the PTA. We really appreciate your support of getting the word out. Just to tell you a little bit about the asynchronous day yesterday, our staff developed units based in project-based learning, and as you know, that's part of our strategic plan. We reviewed our ELA programs and engaged in planning and development around technology, social, emotional learning, lesson plan, lesson design, and curriculum. And our students, as everybody said, participated in our second PTA-sponsored career panel. As everybody said, the purpose of yesterday's panel was to give our students a glimpse into the professional pathway in health and science. Our esteemed panel included two of our board trustees. So a very special thank you to Ms. Gordier and Ms. Banky for their participation. Students learned a lot, and the time and insight helped them to crystallize for our students the opportunities in these promising and important fields, and as Ms. Gordier said, that there are many ways to get there, and you don't have to know that one decision does not lead possibly to the end decision. So we hope that all our 6th through 12th graders tune into all of these career affairs, because you never know. And many of the people on the panel said they've changed their mind while they were on the path. At William Cottle, this was such a great day. The 5th graders, yesterday, actually, participated in the day of graduation. The picnic was a huge success. We did it differently. We couldn't have it at Lake Isle, but it was just so active and so much fun for our students yesterday. We thanked the Toccojo Police Department and Officer Evan Piasta for supporting positive decision-making and teaching our students that. This week also saw the launch of the Building Bridges Program, an important partnership with the PTA to educate our students on various physical and learning disabilities. And today, we also started the Taste of Toccojo. Again, thank you to our PTA. The PTA also provided our teachers on Monday with an appreciation lunch, which they all enjoyed, and they really felt the support of our parents and community. Our students in the elementary school are just buzzing, and so is the middle school and high school. The spirit can be felt everywhere. Meanwhile, we continue to monitor the changes as we go forward to plan our end-of-the-year activities. We're really looking at, you know, both, all our moving-up ceremonies, and it keeps on changing for the Department of Health. We want to give our kids, just like we're doing with all our events this year, to give them the opportunities, the best opportunities we can. Please make sure to follow us on social media and to check our principal's weekly newsletters, because that will give you updated information. As the weather warms up, Toccojo is looking to a bright future, including a promising 21-22 school year. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Goodman. Next up, we have comments by our Assistant Superintendent for Business. Ms. Lou, you have anything? No?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Not tonight? Okay, great. All right, this brings us to our first recognition of the audience for agenda items only. Yeah, you're speaking on the PTA? Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, that's all right.
Hi, everybody. I'm Susan Neely. I'm the PTA president. Thank you for your efforts, board and administrators, in orchestrating today's vote, and all of the education that has gone out to the community over the last month or so. I know a lot of effort went into the flyers and the videos and the website and all those initiatives, and the PTA was happy to support that outreach, but you guys definitely deserve a ton of credit for taking the awareness from not very much before spring break to a very high level now. So hopefully, everybody is voting today and casting their, voicing their opinion. And thank you for all of your nice comments. I'm sitting there glowing while you're celebrating all the things the PTA has done. I'm very proud of our executive board, as I always am. And as you know, I get up here every month to showcase all the fine work that our board does. We have a very robust board of volunteers who make all these things possible. So I'm the spokesperson, but they're the ones doing the work behind the scenes, and I would like to salute them. I also just want to clear the air a little bit about an issue that came up, because it appears that there's been a misstep in a PTA initiative that I want to, you know, explain and publicly apologize for, which is, we launched a fundraiser this week selling vaccine cardholders that are branded with Toccojo Strong. It was nobody's intention for this to be ill-received by anyone, but it's been brought to my attention by several members of the community that this has not gone over well with those individuals, and I respect that. So I'm glad that their objection was voiced to me, because without that input, I would have no idea. Apparently, and this I find very reprehensible, apparently, there's some shaming in the community of people who are not jumping on the vaccine bandwagon, and the PTA would never, ever condone such behavior. We admonish it completely, but never, I did not think that selling this item would stir any issues, because I didn't know this was happening, and I see it as something that the community can opt in or opt out of. You know, not to make light of it in any way, but a month ago, we held a plant sale fundraiser, and I looked at this in the similar way. Either you buy a plant or you don't. And if you don't want to do this, don't do it, but certainly, no ill-intention was meant to shame anyone or proselytize or anything. It was really just meant to be, hey, for those of you who would find this item useful, we are selling them. But I do also just want to acknowledge that I immediately took action, even just with the first communication from a parent who was concerned, and I suspended this initiative. And I wanted to take some time to explore the pros and cons of doing this, and I am, you know, very regretful to be in this situation at all. Meanwhile, though, in the first couple hours of this announcement, over 50 items were purchased by the community. So now I'm in a bind. So I didn't want to make any hasty decisions, and I didn't want it to just be on me, so I consulted with various advisors on the subject, including the authority that we answer to, which is the Regional Office of the PTA, which is, represents the Westchester and Putnam County PTA units. And I was advised not to suspend the effort, but to direct any inquiries to that office if anyone is interested in, you know, having anything to say, but rather just to explain that there, you know, as I said, there's no ill-intention here, and I hope everybody can appreciate that, you know, this was, it was, what can I say? I've said it. You know, it's just something that I wish did not spark such a reaction, but it has, and I, it's my, it was my idea personally, so if anyone has an objection, please voice it to me. I also just want to clear the air that what the PTA does as a fundraiser is not endorsed or anything by the school administration or Board of Ed, and therefore, any objection should just come to the PTA, not any third party. But I would like to also now move along, because we also have a lot of great things that I want to share, and you touched on some of them, so I'll try to be brief and skip over those. In addition to providing the lunch for our teachers and staff, who we wanted to recognize for their hard work, and as a belated acknowledgement of Teacher Appreciation Week, we also gifted our school nurses to honor them on School Nurse Day. And in addition to the career panel that was offered yesterday on the asynchronous day and the staff lunch, we also took advantage of the asynchronous day to have our community service committee orchestrate a civic service opportunity for our high school students to raise awareness about today's vote. And they were earning community service hours for making cold calls to an anonymous list that was provided to them with a script, telling people, remember to get out and vote. And so we were happy to have that opportunity for our high school students. This week, we have a lot more going on also. Dr. Goodman touched on the Building Bridges Program, which is a week-long, I can't believe how much work has gone into this program, to give Cottle students in all grades the opportunity to meet with volunteer educators and hear about how it is to be a person with different abilities. So we have volunteers all week going into the classrooms virtually and are doing a fabulous job of educating them about what it's like to have autism or to not be able to see properly and so forth. And there's an army of people working on that, beyond even our executive board. We also, as Dr. Goodman mentioned, started Taste of Toccojo this year, and I want to give a shout-out to our middle school and high school committees, because even though this is an annual tradition, it's something that we had to completely reconfigure this year because of COVID. So it wasn't just picking up where we left off two years ago, but really reimagining this into a multi-day event with a food truck, also a lot of volunteers. And one of our PTA board members discovered that 70 children did not order in advance, and she reached out to 70 families to make sure it wasn't an oversight. So that's the kind of attention that our board gives to people, and I'm very impressed by that and just want to give recognition. And then there are other things happening as well. We have our PTA dance recital is going to take place outdoors, and the children are rehearsing currently. Our Cottle Yearbook is wrapping up. We had graduation pictures last week for the K and V students. And we wrapped up our nomination process, where we requested that members of the community apply to join our board next year. We have about half our positions are turning over, and we got a lot of great responses, and those will be voted on at our June 8 meeting, and all applicants will be notified after June 8 about the outcome. But we really appreciate that so many people reached out to us wanting to be involved. And there are, however, a few positions that no one has applied for, so if somebody's still interested in getting involved, I hope that they'll reach out and see if we could find a good fit, because we do like to diversify and welcome fresh blood. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Can I just ask you one quick question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Are you able to say what those positions are, so we can maybe explore?
Well, we have two officer positions, which require at least two years prior experience on the executive board, which, so that makes it a little harder to fill. That's our bylaws. I'm, let me get back to you, if you don't mind, Lori, because I don't remember offhand, and I don't want to say the wrong thing.
Okay.
All right, great. Thank you, Ms. Neely. Anybody else for any items on the agenda? No? Okay. All right, we'll move on then. First up is our consent agenda. We resolved to approve Consent Agenda Items 2 through 5. Do I have a motion? Teresa, second. Lori, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Business to the board. Accept the proposal. We resolved that the Board of Education at Toccojo Union Free School District approves the proposal from Toni Ann Bernard for K through 2 teachers in integrating the foundations program and all literacy instruction programs for the period of February 1, 2021 through June 25, 2021, not to exceed $5,000. Do I have a motion? Teresa, second. Lori, any discussion, questions?
I'm curious. This is February 1 through June, so it's basically finished. Is that right? And, oh, wait. Wait, February 1.
Through June 21.
Through June, you're right. So we're coming up to it ending.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious, when we accept a proposal, is that typical, that we're accepting it near the end of what the service that was provided? I'm just, just a procedural question.
Well, no, not usually, but she didn't put in her time and all that.
So it's a paperwork.
So we did the first half. I think we approved that like last.
Yeah. But she is.
That ended on January 31.
Okay.
It also had a knock to the C, $5,000.
Right. That's why I was wondering.
So it was accumulation that she didn't put the positions in in timely fashion, and therefore, there was a backlog.
All right. All in favor? Okay. Next, approve a side letter agreement. We resolved that the Board of Education at Toccojo Union Free School District hereby approves the side letter of agreement dated January 29, 2021, by and between the district and the Toccojo Teachers Association, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Teresa, any discussion? All in favor? Next, approve a side letter agreement. We resolved that the Board of Education at Toccojo Union Free School District hereby approves the side letter of agreement dated January 29, 2021, by and between the district and the Toccojo Teachers Association, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Teresa, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next, the resolution to designate a poll clerk to cast and canvass affidavit ballots. Whereas during the annual meeting and election, which took place during the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM on May 18, 2021, certain voters who claimed to live at addresses within the geographical confines of the Toccojo Union Free School District, the district, presented themselves to cast the ballot, but his or her names could not be found on the list of registered voters or in the registration poll ledger. And whereas each of those voters were permitted to vote by affidavit in accordance with Education Law 2019-A, and whereas, under Education Law 2019-A, before certifying the results of the May 18, 2021 annual meeting and election, the Board of Education must designate itself or such of its employees, as it deems appropriate, as a set of poll clerks to cast and canvass such ballots and fix a time and place for their meeting for such purposes, provided that such meeting shall be no more than 10 days after the annual meeting and election in which such affidavit ballots were cast. Now, therefore, be resolved that in accordance with Education Law 2019-A, the Board of Education at the Toccojo Union Free School District hereby designates Robin Dunn, district clerk, as the poll clerk to cast and canvass the affidavit ballots cast on the May 18, 2021 annual meeting and election, and had a meeting to take place on May 24, 2021, at 10:00 AM in the office of district clerk. Do I have a motion? Lori, Teresa, second. Any discussion? So basically, we received some ballots that we weren't able to verify the residencies, so we accepted the vote, but we just cannot certify it tonight, essentially, until that's been certified.
Right, because as of right now, those affidavit ballots are pending.
Right.
Based on what the investigation comes out to be. So the board elections will be involved within the investigation in order to verify either to agree or deny.
Okay. So we'll be able to still announce the results tonight of the vote. We just won't be able to certify those results until that's been done.
How long does that usually take to certify the investigation or whatever?
Yeah, we have 10 days, and we're too secure, but I would say that by midweek next week, we will have a definitive answer.
Can you share with us the number?
Two.
Oh.
Two votes, two ballots.
There were actually three, but one I was able today to verify that they were, in fact, on the roster at the board elections. They just didn't make our poll votes. So voters still had to vote via an affidavit ballot, but that ballot will be counted tonight as a vote.
Okay.
So they're outstanding.
Okay.
Good to know.
Thank you.
And I should say, that was as of 7:00 tonight.
Okay. Fair enough.
All right. All in favor? Good. So that actually is the end of our agenda. We didn't really have much tonight in terms of business, so that brings us to our second recognition of the audience for any items at all. Ms. Neely?
I'm sorry. I don't mean to hog. I just realized I left out part of my report concerning next week, so if you'll forgive me. I just want to do a little PS. On Tuesday of next week, our Cottle Committee is organizing Field Day, which is a heart-healthy field day, and we're working with the Cottle staff on this closely and a number of volunteers. And in fact, everyone should check their email right now if they want to volunteer, because they specifically scheduled an announcement of the signup genius for 8:00 at night and told everybody to be on the lookout, so that everybody could hit the signup genius at the same time and get dibs. That's Tuesday. And then on Wednesday, the 26th, we have our PTA general meeting that I would like to encourage everyone in the community to attend. Dr. Goodman is going to be a guest speaker, along with Beth, I forget her last name, from Rethink, and the topic will be how our district will be implementing our social-emotional learning program, which I think is going to be extremely informative, so we hope that everybody attends that. And I feel like I'm forgetting something else. Okay. Oh, I know what it is. We had a conflict with the scheduled principal pajama read aloud at Cottle, because that was also scheduled for the same night as our PTA general meeting. So we are rescheduling that with a date to be announced sometime in June, so stay tuned for that. We will announce a new date shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Allison Halloran. I just wanted to make a note of something that was mentioned at the February 1 workshop, where the superintendent presented her goals for the district. At that workshop, Dr. Goodman, you had responded to some comments from the board that you were interested in getting our high school guidance counselors to form new relationships with colleges and universities outside of the typical ones that Toccojo seems to gravitate towards. I was so happy to hear you say that, because it's something that I believe is very much needed. As a mother of a child of a junior who has no interest in any of the typical Toccojo favorites, I'm really looking forward to hearing about what your plan is to get the guidance counselors to form these new relationships, to get the colleges to be more interested in our students. As you know, or hopefully you know, colleges are becoming more and more selective, and it is going to be extremely difficult for our current juniors to get in, because a lot of children now, for the last two years, have taken some gap time and are going to be filling up those spots where our children should be. And schools are just deciding to be more and more selective. So the guidance counselors, being well-informed on what the college process is, where different colleges for every level student are, and how to help the students navigate getting into those schools, is extremely important, more so now. of children now for the last two years have taken some gap time and are going to be filling up those spots where our children should be, and schools are just deciding to be more and more selective. So the guidance counselors being well informed on what the college process is, where different colleges for every level student are, and how to help the students navigate getting into those schools is extremely important, more so now than ever. It is really important that, I love my guidance counselor, by the way, she is extremely responsive. She is, I really do feel she has the best interests of the children at heart, this is not any direct thing towards her. It is just that many other high schools, and I know we're too small to do this, but many other high schools have a dedicated college advisor for students, and we can't do that. And so we really need to make sure that both of our guidance counselors are very well knowledgeable, are really knowledgeable about all schools out there, what it will take to get the kids in, and do help to build those relationships for it. It's really not the time to experiment to see if somebody may fit the role of a high school guidance counselor. Also, I would like you to keep in mind, as the summer is approaching and as we're starting to take what comes out of the budget tonight and form our new programs and do our scheduling for the next year, please keep in mind that all high school level classes do go on the child's transcript, and if they do poorly because we experimented with something or some plan, that affects them forever. What happens in eighth grade in a high school level class and in ninth grade really, really affects their opportunities for what schools they can get into. When we decide to drop certain programs and put in new ones and maybe not have the basis, like I was recently explained, that since we put in AP Physics, we decided to drop regular Regents Physics, which is a little bit unorthodox, because it's, AP Physics is one of the hardest APs to pass, and so not having the Regents Physics to give the basis to then go on to the AP Physics is a little unorthodox. And, you know, when we do, when we make decisions like that, and, you know, we have to really just keep in mind, are we setting the children up for success at all levels? Always keeping in mind that that grade that goes on the report card, that goes on the transcript is going to affect them. I just really need you to keep that in mind, and I mean even, you know, what we did this year, where we just threw everybody into earth science and accelerated algebra, you know, it is a good thing that the state decided to make those tests optional, because from what I've been told, that even the kids who have excellent grades in those classes may not have done so great come the Regents, and that would have affected them forever. So I'm just really asking that the board please keep that goal in mind of getting the guidance counselors to be more informed in the college process, and when we're creating programs and we're adding new stuff, we have to be conscious of what we're taking away, and is that really the best decision for the children, especially at the higher grades, because it really does affect them forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to come here tonight to speak about a few concerns that I have. Face masks is one concern. I have a child in fourth grade who is currently on remote learning. I decided to remove him from the classroom setting in December of 2020. As a mother, I cannot allow my child to endure sitting in a classroom, going to gym, playing outside, or trying to socialize wearing breathing apparatus on his face. This mandate and our children's wearing of these coverings all day, five days a week for an entire school year, now is considered, in my opinion, inhumane at this point. I would like to also point out that any child or adult forced to wear a mask because they are not vaccinated is medical discrimination. We were all told to wear masks to help flatten the curve, but here we are, a year later, still being told to wear them regardless of the fact that flu season is over, natural immunity has occurred, and many people infected with the natural virus, and over 7 million people in New York alone have been vaccinated. Our children are the least vulnerable population to suffer from this virus, yet they are being treated, in my opinion, the worst. How can we as human beings allow this to continue for this long? What happened to our humanity, our common sense, and our responsibility, we owe to each other as people and to our children's happiness. The governor has openly stated yesterday that he will consider, he will consider the recent revision of masks by the CDC. So if he has to tell everyone we need to wear masks for the rest of our lives, will we just blindly follow along? My point is here, everyone in the capacity of the school position should start collectively making some common sense decisions and stick to it. We can't blindly keep following bad ideas from people who flip-flop on medical theories. We need to start making decisions that will help our children become happy, the parents happy, and the members in the school capacity happy. I propose making masks optional come September 21, so everyone can feel like they have a choice. My second concern and request is that any and all vaccine-related conversations among students and personnel be completely shut down at the onset. Medical conversations, questions, and opinions should be between a parent, their doctor, and a child. We need to reiterate to our children, medical choices are not up for debate or privy to open discussions. This request comes on the heels of peer pressure being built amongst students, which is causing anxiety. Vaccine conversations were never a topic of conversation in the past, and this should not be any different. As I explained in a recent email, not only are we being bombarded day and night on television channels, radio stations, store intercoms, et cetera, do we really need more barraging on this? Everyone is sick of it, and it doesn't exclude opening school emails promoting vaccine paraphernalia or being informed of a new vaccine site. We have enough daily reminders, so let's try to stay focused on the education aspects of our children with reading, writing, and arithmetic, and terminate all medical topics. Thank you for allowing me to voice my concerns, and I hope you consider my requests.
Thank you.
I do need just a few extra minutes, if it's possible. I know that you'd like us to stick to a three-minute time period, and I won't be that much more.
It's okay.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Jellai, I reside at 98 Parkview Drive. I am the parent of six children, one of whom just recently graduated and is wrapping up his freshman year now. I have three children who are in high school, in middle school, and two who are in high school. The reason I am here tonight is to follow up an email that I sent to Dr. Goodman on May 10, in response to the four emails that she sent within one week's period of time addressing the subject of vaccination for our children's age 16 and older. These emails were on May 1, wherein she discussed the vaccine hotline, May 6 detailed Walgreens' location for vaccination, and two emails went out on May 8 discussing a pop-up site and also the location of the Pelham High School pop-up site that was ultimately decided upon. I do believe that three of these emails were specifically directed at the parents of the high school, high schoolers and students only, so parents of younger students, please hear me, because it may soon be coming to you. And while I did receive a very prompt response from Dr. Goodman, and while I appreciate the incredible achievements led to date by Dr. Goodman, the email response that I received was, the concerns were not adequately addressed. And so while the emails did not speak to the mandating of vaccination, the tone and tenor of the emails implicitly suggested that students and parents take the vaccine since it is now available, and continued to subtly reference graduation and prom. You then went as far as detailing a local high school which would accommodate the vaccination, and while you specify it's all a parent's choice, you likewise included consent forms for parents to authorize the administration of the vaccine currently, which is only approved for emergency use. This suggestion gives the appearance you support vaccination of our children. My point is this, Dr. Goodman and the board, early in the school year, you led our district by ensuring our elementary school children could attend school on a daily basis. Our children needed it, and we sincerely appreciated your efforts. However, with mask mandates and an extreme push to vaccinate, why are you not leading now? If this is a CDC and teachers' union thing, wherein you are simply following lock and step with their guidelines, then why do you bypass those guidelines to bring K through five back when the union clearly did not want that? You pushed hard for our youngest children, and it was the right thing to do. Why do you go against the guideline when you reduce the physical distance from six feet to three feet? Because again, it was the right thing to do. Now if you say to me, you are simply joining along with the other local surrounding school districts, this doesn't make sense either, because Eastchester School District certainly didn't return to in-school person yet while we did in March. You can't simply pick and choose which guidelines you want to follow and which you'd like to bypass. My question is, why are you not pushing back just as hard to free our kids from these mask mandates and the unnecessary pressure of vaccination in our older children? We need that same leadership as we know you are capable of, as our superintendent who is beloved. And we also need for you to be an example to all of our surrounding districts by advocating for all of our children and families, by being transparent in your communication to the governor on behalf of the Tukahoe Union Free School District, to indicate that the science contradicts their guidance by having to submit to testing or vaccination for outdoor school functions. I want to have my answers responded to in writing. And a few things. Number one, I'd like to know what the board's position is on the school's role in vaccination of our children, while emails are being disseminated simultaneously referencing graduation and prom. Number two, will this type of email extend down to our middle and elementary schools in the same fashion now that they are pushing 12- to 15-year-olds to vaccinate? Number three, please address what the school is doing to support those students who do not feel safe, who feel pressured because they are being targeted as anti-vaxxers and irresponsible, and because they feel they are being punished if they make the unpopular choice to not vaccinate, or if they drop their mask by being sent to the office. Number four, what will you do to drop the mask mandates? Number five, will the school work with the board to advocate and outline a common sense appeal directly to Westchester County and the governor demanding these ridiculous mandates be lifted? I have two examples from school districts on Long Island that I will share with you. Number six, can we stop normalizing the conversation of vaccination within the school and keep this decision a private one between a parent and a physician? And finally, I will end with this, the continuation of any vaccination information is quite frankly alarming and outside of the realm of what we expect from a leader in our school district. If I'd ask, I'd ask you to understand that I came here with respect and love for my community, and our board, and our school staff, and we owe this to our children at each of our schools to return to normalcy. I don't ever want one of my six children to ask me why I sat back and did and said nothing. Thank you.
Anybody else? Nope?
Do we want to?
Do you want to address it?
Well, I would.
If somebody has a comment, you're welcome to.
If you don't mind.
Is there any more comments from the audience now, right? So if you'd like to make a comment?
I just, you know, I know that this is breaking protocol a little bit, we hear comments and we will, you know, typically discuss behind and get back to, but I just want to thank parents for coming out. I think that, you know, one of the things as a board is that, you know, as an individual, I can have an opinion, as a board, it's another, we work in unison, we work as a group, but when we, when the, you know, when Dr. Goodman sends out communications, we're not always, you know, again, we're not always going to be, you don't need approval of every communication that goes out, and what I'm trying to say is that, as a mother and as a parent, I have reached out to Vladimir's office, to Shelly Mayor's office, I've had, I've actually had conversations with them, I've contacted the governor's office. I personally, I'm taking my board hat off for a minute here, but I personally have taken my personal time to do that as a parent, you know, to voice my concerns. I don't think we should be masking our children in school. I think there's no science behind it, as there was in science when we had these conversations about bringing all the kids back, I went in, I researched, and we steadfast said, this does not make sense, bring the kids back. And likewise now, wearing these things is theater, in my opinion, and I think having our little children and our adult, and our young adults actually reprimanded, I've gotten emails from teachers saying, you know, please, you know, tell your kids to have them up over their nose, and I've had parents say to me that their kids have been sent to the office, and, you know, I think as a district, that we could have the conversation and be a little more transparent about where we're going with this and what our idea is on, and that may not be tonight, but I do very much appreciate parents coming out, and I just wanted to let, from a parent's perspective, that I do voice and I do speak out from a parent, again, the district is another thing, but I do think that masks at this point should not be at all, the CDC is an embarrassment, okay? What they're doing to us right now, playing games with these children, they are not transmitting this, they are not giving them to, we know this, we knew this back, which is why we brought them all back, we knew the schools were safe, we knew kids weren't transmitting it, and you can't find a study that shows that kids are transmitted to staff members, you can't find it, because I've looked everywhere. So I thank you, and I just want you to know that, just, I have to say, from a parent's perspective, I totally understand. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I will answer, there were a lot of things there that I can't answer, you know, but I think that the best way to go about this is to, we have Health and Wellness Committee and have them be a part of it, I am not a doctor, I tried to make it clear in all the emails that it, talk to your school, your own physician about this, it's informational, and there are people interested in getting this, truly, and that they, they don't know that it's only Pfizer that they can get. I mean, it is a very personal decision, I've said it all along, but I think that, you know, this, we could have a meeting with the Health and Wellness Committee and see where we are going with this. We are under the mandate of the Department of Health in New York, as well as the Westchester Department of Health. We are, you know, the mandates are changing, you know, I don't even know, like, from what was originally thought of, what you're allowed, and when you have to have people tested to or have a vaccine to go to our prom, or to go to a indoor or outdoor event, keeps on changing. I mean, the latest ones were May 8, and, you know, I'm sure, I'm hoping that there will be other ones coming along, so it's a moving target, but we have to follow what the Department of Health says. I mean, I've never violated, so if you think I did, I never violated it.
And we have convened multiple times as the Health and Wellness Committee, and we did not violate the three and six feet, we definitely pushed it to the limit, and we carefully read the mandates from the governor, but we are a public school, and we are also, we have to follow certain things, because of that we get public funding, and for us to totally go rogue and say, we're not going to do three feet, we're going to drop the masks, we don't believe in it, whatever our personal beliefs are, we then jeopardize our state funding, and the governor can become very punitive. So I personally, I'm not going to discuss my own feelings here, I am a healthcare worker, I have, you know, had to do things in my position as a healthcare worker, and I give advice, and I try to be very, very factual about all the advice I give, and in sitting on the boards with Dr. Goodman and other colleagues, and one of the people that sat on our Health and Wellness Board actually runs a lab studying the SARS-2, so the COVID-19 virus. So where it may seem like we went against recommendations, we actually, we, meaning Dr. Goodman, really tore them apart to maximize what we could do for our kids here. And I'm in a position where I deal with a lot of other people in the surrounding areas, and I think that our leadership here allowed our kids to come back into schools, which I believe is the most important thing for their health and well-being, and for anybody who is questioning what the next pandemic will be, I can tell you whole, with 100% confidence, it is mental health. Right now, the American Academy of Pediatrics, I work with the Connecticut chapter, the number one cause of death in adolescents and young adults is suicide. It is no longer motor vehicle accidents. That is our next epidemic, and our problem, by isolating these kids, by keeping them out of sports, by not allowing them to interact with their peers, anyone who had anxiety that they could function with, now it's paralyzing them. Anyone who had depression and sadness now doesn't want to live, right? them to interact with their peers, anyone who had anxiety that they could function with, now it's paralyzing them. Anyone who had depression and sadness now doesn't want to live, right? So this has magnified all of that, and I personally am proud of what we've done as a district. I've put a lot of hours in, and I really want to commend Dr. Goodman for doing her homework and for really trying to advocate for our children. And I understand that this is an incredibly polarizing and hot-button topic, but there is science behind it, and we are a public school. And you could argue that if you wanted to pay $50,000 to send your kid to whatever school, then you would have been in school, you would have had no, you know what I mean? Unfortunately, we're not a private sector, and so that is part of what landed us where we are today. So.
I wanted to follow up with another thing. I'm with you on a lot of this, because I'm actually, I don't even know how the poor little things, little babies have been able to even manage, but they do. They're so resilient, and I don't know that the little ones, I mean, it's just part of what they do now, you know? Now they're saying you can take the mask off, and even, I'm kind of like, "Really? Are you sure?" You know, so you just don't know. But I want to say there is a facet in our community that doesn't get the kind of information that they would like to get about the vaccine on their own, for whatever the reason. So they are getting their information from the district when it comes to where they should go look for a vaccine, and I'm talking about those who want a vaccine. They don't know necessarily where to go get them, if it's easier or not to get them, can they get an appointment? And so many people that I know who come up to me, I don't even know them, but they, maybe they know me, are very thankful for the communication that has come from the district. So I realize that it's a personal choice, and it is, but you have to remember, there may be other people who really do appreciate the information that the district is given when it comes to vaccine sites or what's happening, and, you know, they really depend on that information. They would not otherwise be able to get it on their own, for whatever the reason. So we always have to look at, you know, the glass half-empty or half-full. I just, you know, have to say, and again, I'll start, I'll end with what I started this meeting with. My comment was that this is the first time in many years, I've been here for quite some time now, that I felt that our, the spirit in this district has been positive, and I am so sorry that there would be anybody that would be shaming students out here because they're not vaccinated, or people, or whatever. That should not be happening, but this is the first we're hearing out, we're hearing about it since all of this has come to play. The pulse in the district has been very positive from beginning until now. And I believe that moving forward, if we all work together and consider different perspectives on issues like this, and be fair-minded in our thinking, I think that we can continue to move forward. And so for those people who want the information, they're grateful to get it.
I just want to say one more thing before anything else happens. If people are thinking that the student is being bullied, or shamed, or anything like that, we do have a DASSA procedure. We always recommend that you go to the teacher first, and then if you need to go to the principal, go to me. Nobody, no student should feel like they are being bullied or shamed. So I just want to get that out there. I'm sorry to hear that. So in fact, the parent who wrote that to me, I was going to call her and ask her, remember I just said, give me her number, because I wanted to know, like, specifically, and we can't talk about specific themes here, of what happened. So it's very important to us that we find out.
I'm sorry, can you go to the microphone? Yeah, just because the folks at home can't hear you if you speak like that. I'm sorry. I know it's a long walk.
It's like the walk of shame.
No, 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 no. Just because if you're not at a microphone, then they can't hear you at all.
I just come from a house where we, Maria Bordwell, my husband has received the vaccine. We're not anti-vaxxers in our house. He travels, he has underlying health issues, he has age issues, all these issues, right? So we, he has received the vaccine. However, my daughters and I have not, and that is our choice. And we, in our home, I'll get along and I'll respect each other, and I'll respect each other's both sides of the story. And my daughters are so afraid that they will be the only ones having to wear masks because they're unvaccinated. And this is where I addressed Dr. Goodman in a letter and the PTA. They're great students, they're great kids, they love the school, they couldn't be happier. They're happy to be back, but the fact that they're going to be the only ones in their classes, and they're feeling this pressure from their teachers. And so, yes, there are people who need to understand where the vaccines are, and they don't get the information they need, but then, in our house, then there's also people who need to hear the other side as well. And I just don't think that we are pushing, promoting, or welcoming, you know, showing respect for people who are making different decisions. We're not against it, we want to wait until it's tested. You know, it's a simple fact. The tests aren't out, it's emergency use. We don't know at 16-years-old, you know, the Hippocratic oath, first, do no harm, right? They're perfectly healthy girls, and they shouldn't have to be shamed at school and embarrassed that they're only ones wearing a mask, is what they're afraid of. And I'm sorry, I didn't plan this, I wasn't really going to come up here, because this is very intimidating, but it's a very emotional issue for us. So thank you.
Thank you for speaking. I don't, I don't think that right now there's any indication that there's going to be a policy where some, with the kids who are not vaccinated don't wear a mask, or vice versa, right? That's not.
You know, this may be out, you know, we have heard it, that, you know, vaccinated people don't have to wear a mask, but that is not being mandated in the schools through the Department of Health. In fact, and I know that there are people that don't want to wear a mask anymore, but what happened with what just came out from the governor and from the Department of Health and the CDC said congregate settings, including schools, still have to go with the mask mandate. Truthfully, I'd rather, I think that the social distancing, if you wear a mask, I mean, I did let the Department of Health know that if you're having us wear a mask, then this whole social distancing thing, this is my own personal feeling, but I'm going to follow what they say, is, you know, and I'm thinking about graduation and having to sit six feet apart, and how many people we could have, or if we have to split them up, I think that that would make sense, but we don't all get what we think. You know, we have to, we do, and we always have, like Teresa, we always do follow the Department of Health. And right now, so that you all know, nobody is going to be checked and said, "Are you vaccinated, are you not? You can take off your mask and you can't." And I, and that is not, that is not happening in, with the CDC guidance or the New York State Department of Health guidance.
I just want to say one last thing on that. I'm for, I'm so sick of this situation right here, I can't even, you know, it's just terrible. And I hope we have some sort of bonfire where we all bring our masks and dunk them in and just burn them up, because this is, this has been something else. So I look forward to when we don't have to wear it.
I'm really hoping, and I just think that by September, I think the way we're going as a country, I'm very much hoping that this.
What you just said, I mean, you know, and this is where a lot of the frustration comes from, it does not make sense. Like, if I'm wearing a mask, why do I have to sit six feet away from you?
I don't know.
Yeah, exactly. It just, but like, again, we're a public school, and I've, this has been a steep learning curve for me too, because we were subject to government and policy. I would encourage everybody to flood your.
Advocate.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to say, you know, I appreciate everybody coming out and speaking.
Flood mailboxes and write letters.
I think it's great that you're speaking, but I almost feel like you're speaking to the wrong crowd, in a way. I mean, I, for me personally, I've been relying.
You don't think Cuomo's watching this?
What's that?
You don't think Cuomo's watching it?
I doubt he is. Maybe he is, I don't know. Oh, I, I've been relying all along on the recommendation of our Health and Wellness Committee, and I know that our administration and that committee has been pushing the envelope as much as we can push it. I think, I'm glad you mentioned that before, we're not violating any, we're pushing it to the max, but we're not, not following some guidelines. We're doing everything we can do within the confines of the Department of Health's rules. And I think this district, it's been said before, but it's worth saying again, has been on the forefront of pushing that to the very edge. We've been the first ones to bring kids back, and you mentioned that before. So I'm proud of what we've done, I'm frustrated as well, I'm sick of these masks as well. I think we're at a point now, with our numbers being so low, that it is time to roll it all back. But I feel like it's going that way, and that's why, you know, I don't want to sound sort of gullible or complacent, but it feels like the trend right now is this stuff is rolling back pretty quickly. So I'm willing to sit back a little bit and see where it goes. I guess, and I'm proud of how much we've been pushing it. I've been relying on the Health and Wellness Committee's recommendations, but I certainly expect these masks to be gone in September, except unless something drastically changes. And I think if that's not the case, then I think it's time to raise holy hell. I really do. But we're not there yet, I'd like to see how.
I also think the proof of vaccine is sort of, it's really weak.
Yeah.
You could easily counterfeit a vac, I mean, let's be, you work for the FBI. If I, you know what I mean? Like, this is already happening, where people are like, counterfeiting, it's just, it's promoting things, you know, more negative things, and there's no, there's no science to, you know, support what we're doing now, for sure, what we're doing, so.
I just, I'm sorry, before you just, just real, just before you go, I just wanted to finish up with hearing these stories, and I've, some of the, my children have also told me these stories about what's happening at schools. So I just, without saying any names, or without getting into personnel or whatever, I would, I would like the administration to be aware of this, to know, to let the parents know that they are aware of these things that are happening, and be proactive, and talk to teachers, and maybe kids aren't sent to, I mean, we're talking about mental, you know, we're talking about a mental crisis, a mental health crisis. We're just, this is where it's just at the beginning of it.
We are.
What we have done to children is, and they're not vectors of this, okay? What we've done to them is really, as a society, I'm not talking about the board, I'm just talking about, as a culture, we're realizing now what the effects, and it's going to be a long time before we really know it. My point is, in saying that, and that's a reality, we need to back off a little bit. And you're sending kids to the office for their mask being below their nose, or we're shaming in front of the teachers in here? I mean, let's just, I just want to say, can we just recognize that we're going to be proactive about helping these kids through this, not punishment and, and hyper, you know, focus on things that's giving them even more anxiety, like vaccines.
So, you know, just, first of all, I just want to make sure that, you know, I don't, from what I see, this is not a rampant problem, that, you know, kids are getting shamed over the time or anything like that. I don't want that to be out there, because there's always fact, and, you know, we have to really look at what, you know, this might have happened to one kid or two kids, it might be student to student, but we do have to follow the rules. I am telling you that we are not going to say that you can keep a mask off if the Department of Health is saying you have to have a mask on, because what can happen is the liability of the school district. It may have nothing to do with what's happened at school, but once you drop, whatever they say you're supposed to do, and it's your child, all of a sudden, you're like, "Well, I heard that, you know, you're not having kids wear masks in school." So there is a way to encourage kids. Mostly, I have to say, the kids have been, I mean, I'm in the schools all the time, they have been incredible. I'm always looking around and going, "I can't even believe that our students in Tuckahoe have risen to be able to do this." And they, and they really are. Maybe some aren't, and those are the ones we need to work with and help, but we can't not follow the rules. We can't not follow the law. It puts, not only, you know, the science is, you know, may not be there right now, but we cannot go against the law. We just can't do it.
No, and I'm not suggesting that we do at all.
I'm not suggesting that at all. I think there's a way to handle things.
Oh, that's all I'm saying. I just want to make sure, because people are listening, and, you know, I know you guys mean that, but I just want to make sure that people.
Well, that's exactly what, my name is Lisa Myers, I live at 55 Listmanard, I have a junior here at Tuckahoe High School, and I have twins in Cottle. And I'm not going to use the word shame. The reason I came up here is because, twofold, what you just said, we have to follow the rules, right? The DOH is handing down the rules. I work in a school district, you know that, we've had many conversations. My question is, you're very hopeful that he, he, meaning Governor Cuomo, is not going to say that if you're not vaccinated in school, you still have to wear the mask. I unfortunately am not as hopeful as you, since he's segregating stadiums. So the man has brought back segregation. Here's your vaccinated section at Yankee Stadium, here's your unvaccinated section. So I don't have quite the faith that you have. My question is, if he hands down a mandate that then basically segregates students by a mask mandate based on a vaccination, then what will the district do?
Again, this is something that I'm not ready to answer tonight, and again, I'm not a doctor, I don't know. I would go by the Health and Wellness Committee and what our attorney says and all of that. As you know, Ms. Myers, because you also, I know you work for a school district, we would be, first of all, I just can't, I know you can imagine.
I hope, I so hope you are, right? But the way things have been rolling out, and the pressure, if you haven't seen the commercials, I'd be floored, because they're on constantly, every second of every day.
I think we have to be really careful in education about the what-ifs, especially during this pandemic, because we can play it a billion different ways. Somebody else can say, "What if, you know, we're wrong about this, or wrong about that?" I think we take it step by step. We do what we've done all along as a school district, is we have a team together, we get the science, and we get the information as it rolls out, and that we make the best decision within following the law. Again, like what I told you about liabilities, whether we're right or wrong, it will end up coming back to us.
If the law is discriminatory, I would hope that our district would fight the law. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Can I respond to some of the things that you said?
Sure.
I think the open dialogue is great. I think its transparency is what people are looking for, because we are not just a few people sitting here, there are so many more who are thinking and feeling the same way that we are, the people who are speaking this evening. So the first thing is, the school really should not be a mouthpiece for the Westchester Department, the Westchester County Department of Health. That has to end, that conversation has to end. And while I understand that some people need to have the information, all they need to do is look at their phone, turn the corner of from where they live, it is everywhere. They do not need to hear it from the school. We do not need to be the purveyors of that information. So I do not agree that if we remain fair-minded and positive, that we just continue to give this information about vaccinations. I think that conversation has to end. The only thing that we should be having in school conversations is about our academics, how we're going to get our children into college, how we could make it to the top 100 lists of schools in Westchester County, not where we can get our vaccinations for emails within one week. Why, if it is about providing information to our community members, why are you not providing information to the contrary? Why are you not telling people what they should be doing to boost their immunity? I don't hear anything to the contrary, I only hear about the vaccination. I'm asking for the vaccination conversation to end. Number two, if, number three, sorry, I have a lot to say. If you think that you've pushed, and we have pushed as a district, we can't just sit back on our laurels and think and hope and wait and pray, because I don't know that I am as hopeful. I agree with what Lisa just said. We need to be proactive, not just personally, but professionally. As a district, we do need to be leading by example, and we do need to be reaching out to the governor and to Latimer. There are other things that we can be doing, we cannot just sit back and wait. That is something that I really would like, we have to be proactive. And finally, the mental health issue for our children is a significant concern, because while you think it might just be one or two children who are feeling shamed, or bullied, or whatever the case might be, you don't know that. These things are silent. So the onus is on you to open up that dialogue and to educate our children and let them know that they should not be targeting other children, they should not be making them feel bad because they make the unpopular choice. And our teachers need to hear that as well. Thank you, guys, really. This is a great conversation.
All right. Yep. All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so we're going to, we're actually not going to adjourn the meeting, we're going to recess. I don't need a motion or anything for that, I'm just going to declare it. And then we're going to come back once we have indication that the vote total is in, and then we will announce it. We're thinking that's going to be sometime around 10 o'clock. So, thank you very much, thank you everybody for the comments, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we're going to come back once we have indication that the vote total is in, and then we will announce it. We're thinking that's going to be sometime around 10 o'clock. Thank you very much, thank you everybody for their comments, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are reconvening, because we have the results of the election. I'm going to turn it over to Lori Gerald, who is our vote chairperson with the results.
Okay. For the budget, 620 yes votes, 174 no votes. 620 represented 78.1% of the total votes, and 21.9% of the no votes was 174. For the proposition, 592 yes votes and 193 no votes. The yes votes was 75.4% of the, of the population that voted, voted yes. For the school trustee, Cynthia Tate, received 561 votes.
All right, great. All right, so that's a passed budget and a passed bond, and congratulations, Cynthia, for another term.
Thank you.
As trustee. So really good news. Thank you very much to our community for the, those numbers were, were pretty impressive in terms of the percentages of yeses on both the budget and the bond. So I take that as a huge vote of confidence and trust in us, so we appreciate that. That, that means a lot to us, it really does. So thank you very much, we're very excited about, about the budget and the bond. Right? Awesome. All right. Great work by everybody, very good, excellent. Thank you very much to the community for that support. So I just need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Cynthia, second to raise, all in favor? All right, thank you very much.